Good evening, welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Calling the meeting to order, I'd like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Ford.
Here.
Mayor Protim Bullock.
Here.
Councilmember Amador.
Present.
Councilmember Teeter.
Here.
Councilmember Carson. Councilmember Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember McElDowney.
Here.
Councilmember Elliott.
Present.
Councilmember Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, and for the record, there are eight of us here. Councilwoman Carson is out of town. I'm open for a motion to allow for an excused absence for Councilwoman Carson. Mr. McElDowney.
So moved.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow for that excused absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'd like to ask everybody to stand and join me for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And ask the staff to pass the microphone around and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Hi, good evening, my name is Vanessa Damod. I'm here with Ralston House.
My name is Ken Parks and I'm here with CASA of Adams and Broomfield Counties.
Good evening, Bruce Thomas, Chairman of the Commerce City Housing Authority.
Tracy Jones, Commerce City Housing Authority.
Misty Rivera, Sabala, Commerce City Housing Authority.
Good evening, my name is Corey Miller and I'm here for one of the land use cases tonight, the Mountain View Industrial Park rezoning.
Brian Whiting with BW Construction.
Shasta, Victim Advocate with the Victim Services Unit.
Stacy Galbo, Victim Advocate with the Victim Services Unit.
Joanie Lira with the Victim Advocate Service Unit.
Kim Messina with Brighton and Commerce City Victim Services.
Misty Ray.
Bradley Johnson, Commerce City Citizens Recycling, here on another topic this evening.
Lynn Schultz, LG Everest.
Terry Woodworth, LG Everest.
Good evening, Susan Beard, Property and Evidence Supervisor, Commerce City Police Department.
Dennis Moon with the Police Department.
Doug Heinman with IT.
Chris Kramer, Community Development.
Kathy Blakeman, Human Resources.
Terry Yurcini.
Bill Kincaid with Central Transport.
Daniel Anafar, Crown Enterprises.
Corey Roth, Sutton Johnson.
Robin Curson, Planning.
Carly Seller.
Teresa Eskridge.
Karen O'Donnell Parks, Recreation and Golf.
Shannon Whitmer, Recreation Coordinator with the City.
Matt Hader with the City Attorney's Office.
All right, thank you all for being here this evening. We'll get into our agenda, we're going to start with Proclamations and Recognitions. First off, is Adams County Mayors and Commissioners Youth Awards recipient recognition? I'd like to invite Shannon Whitmore forward to make the presentation. Whitmer, not Moore, right? Whitmer.
Whitmer.
Thank you. Whitmer.
Honorable Mayor and Members of City Council, my name is Shannon Whitmer and I am the Recreation Coordinator for Teens Programs. The Adams County Mayors and Commissioners Youth Awards is a program that recognizes teenagers in grades six through 12th who have overcome personal adversity to create positive change in their lives. The award program provides businesses, the community, and civic leaders an opportunity to actively demonstrate their support for the young people in all of our communities and recognize them for their accomplishments. Award recipients are determined through a nomination selection process. All nominees are recognized at the local level. A selection committee comprised of representatives from the county and local jurisdictions screened all nominations and selected approximately 22 nominees to be recognized at a countywide celebration in April. Locally, all Commerce City nominees are recognized by City Council at a banquet on March 1st at Buffalo Run Golf Course. Finalists for the county level will be recognized on Thursday, April 27th. We would like to recognize the nominees tonight. Joseph Banks. Ryan Plomowski. Victoria Terrell. Odyssey Dominguez. Nicholas Gonzalez. Brandon Macy. Jocelyn McCaslin. Samuka Looney Vonksa. Jamie Wickersheim. Jessica Wickersheim. Ajayi Mitchell. Samantha Cruz Mancha. And not pictured was Cambria Martinez, Keyshawn Ware, Veronica Chavez, Miranda Moreno, Kylie Gonzalez, and Nicole Wickersheim. We have four moving on to the county banquet and those four include Jamie, Jessica, and Nicole Wickersheim, and Jocelyn McCaslin. Congratulations to all the nominees.
Absolutely, we need to clap. After all the years of serving on city council in one capacity or another, has always been one of my very favorite events to go to, is the Metro Mayor's Commissioners Youth Awards. To be able to talk to these kids and see what they've overcome, to be able to get to where they're at today, going to high school or middle school and helping raise their siblings and working to help cover rent or food, it's a very sad thing to go to, but to see what these kids are capable of and what they've done is truly amazing. So it's one of the programs that I think is very, very good program to help give recognition to those kids that have taken upon themselves to help themselves and to better their own lives. So I can't say enough about the program. So thank you, and thank you to all of the kids that were in the running and we will see those four when we go to that next level, which is the county level. We had our banquet with all of the Commerce City kids, these are the four that'll go on to the county level, and it's very interesting to say the least. Next item, we'll get into sex assault awareness, oh no, I'm sorry, Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation. We've got a ton of proclamations tonight. I'd like to invite the representatives from Ralston House and CASA up to the podium. I'd like to ask the council, well, I'm going to go ahead and have the city attorney read the proclamation. We're going to have the new city, there he is. Matt, if you will read the proclamation, then I'll ask for council to consider it. As soon as we get done with proclamation.
Proclamation 17-02. Whereas Commerce City has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child abuse and to help parents obtain the assistance they need, and whereas our community is stronger when all citizens become aware of child abuse prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs such as Ralston House and Court Appointed Special Advocates for Children of Adams and Broomfield Counties succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and whereas all citizens, community agencies, faith organizations, and businesses will work to increase their efforts to support families. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City declares the month of April 2017 Child Abuse Prevention Month to bring further awareness to this issue.
Thank you. Proclamations be read, is there a motion? Mr. McElDowney.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve proclamation 17-02 declaring April as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion is carried, proclamation has been approved. Thank you for what you do for our communities, and I want to give you an opportunity to tell everybody who you are and who you work for and the efforts that you make towards child abuse prevention every day. So go right ahead.
Ah, that's easy. All right, Mayor and Council, thank you so much. It's always an honor to join you and join our other municipalities in Adams, Jeff, Coprem, Field, and Gilpin Counties. Your previous presentation with the kids shows your commitment to the kids in your community and across our state. Ralston House is a child advocacy center. We provide forensic interviews and medical exams to kids who have experienced some of the worst trauma in their lives, physical abuse, sexual abuse, neglect, torture, and in cases, human trafficking, and those who've witnessed some severe violence. Last year, we conducted 1,128 interviews. That is 1,128 kids who were victims, who are now survivors of some of those terrible, terrible circumstances. It's because of that generosity from communities like yours and others that we're able to provide these services for free to those families, to law enforcement, to social services, and to our district attorneys. It is a huge impact that this makes on these families and in our communities. In a second, I want to give each of you a pinwheel. This pinwheel represents each of those kids, it's kind of a symbol of hope. You're the first ones in Commerce City to get these pinwheels, so I hope you'll display them proudly and remind these kids that they're not alone and that now again, they're survivors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Ken Parks, I'm the Development Director for CASA of Adams and Broomfield Counties. Some of you may know that CASA is a national association of 1,000 local programs, and here in Adams and Broomfield Counties, we're currently able to serve over 500 children who have been abused and neglected each year, and we see a bright future for all those children, and we also see great successes. So we hope you take great pride in that. It takes every city, every person that we can possibly get involved to do our work, and we thank you so much for what you do. One thing we would like to tell you is we are growing our service. We plan to serve every child in need, who needs a CASA advocate within the very near future, and as we do that, the cost per serving each child is actually dropping. So that's the good news of the story, and the good news too is the results that we see. We see great results, as you said, sir, with your commission. You know, there are children out there who accomplish wonderful things, and we see bright futures for many of those who have been through the toughest situations, as my partner here has said. So again, thank you so much for your support, we greatly appreciate you.
Well, the services that you provide go right to what I was talking about with these kids that have overcome so many different things. Without the resources that your organizations provide to our communities, to the children within our communities, that may be that one hand up that they need to get back on track so they don't fall down the same path of what they've been dealt with. So we really appreciate the fact that you give children an opportunity in our community to be able to become mayors and metro mayors, commissioners, youth award recipients because they've achieved so much because they had that one hand up. It's that one child that may be saved, and I don't want to go on and on, but I spent one of my terms, one year during one of my terms where we had several homicides in our community, and we don't average very many homicides in Commerce City, I think it's like one a year. And we had several children that year, and there was a seven-month-old that the body ended up in our landfill. There was a seven-year-old that same year that was pushed down the stairs, fell down the stairs, whatever, and the grandmother or whatever was charged. Those kids don't have a fighting chance when they're seven-month-old or seven-years-old if we're not looking out to make sure that they have some protection to get at least the opportunity to make decisions for themselves someday. They wouldn't be able to do that, there's 1,000 here, 1,124, another 500 on the Court Appointed Special Advocates. So it's very important the work that you do, not just in our community, but throughout the county and counties that you serve. I'd like to ask the council come down. We're going to present you with these proclamations and take a photo with you, and we hope you continue to grow your organizations to benefit these children.
We absolutely will.
Thank you. Now, we're going to work on the proclamation for Sex Assault Awareness Month. So I'd like to invite the Victim Advocate Manager, Kim Messina, forward to accept the City Attorney, will you please read the proclamation?
Proclamation 17-03. Whereas every day, women, men, and children across Colorado suffer the pain and trauma of rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment, and whereas this crime occurs far too frequently, goes unreported too often, and leaves long-lasting physical and emotional scars, and whereas during National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, we recommit as a community to lift the veil of secrecy and shame surrounding sexual violence, raise awareness, support victims, and strengthen our response. And whereas as a community, we share the responsibility to protect each other from sexual assault, to support victims when it occurs, bring perpetrators to justice, and heal lives. And whereas the Commerce City Police Department, as a certified You Have Options Agency, remains committed to offering reporting options to victims, responding to sexual violence with a victim-centered, offender-focused approach. Whereas we must work to provide necessary resources to victims, including medical attention, mental health services, relocation and housing assistance, and advocacy during the criminal justice process. And now therefore, I Sean Ford, Mayor of the City of Commerce City, on behalf of City Council to hereby proclaim April 2017 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Commerce City.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve and accept motion, proclamation 17-03, proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Thank you. Mr. McElDowney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the proclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Proclamation is approved. Kim, thank you so much for coming up and being, you know, one of our victim advocates. I know there's several in the audience, but I want to give you an opportunity to have the mic and explain to everybody what you do and why this means so much to our organization.
Absolutely. Thank you for recognizing April as Sex Assault Awareness Month. As you know, one in four women and one in seven men will be sexually assaulted in their lifetime, which is a large percentage. It's unfortunate, many victims don't come forward and access the needed services of reporting, medical, or advocacy. The Commerce City Police Department implemented the You Have Options Program in January of 2017. They're the sixth police department in the nation to adopt this program, and the program envisions a criminal justice system where sex assault victims can come forward and find justice in a manner that's best for them. It increases reporting for law enforcement. It doesn't necessarily mean there's more sex assaults that are happening in the community, it just means that the community is trusting law enforcement to come forward and tell what has happened to them. It also helps police identify increased offenders, as well as provide law enforcement with the much-needed information that they need to hold offenders accountable. So again, I appreciate you recognizing April's Sex Assault Awareness Month. We also have a bracelet for each of you so that as you wear it and people ask you what that is, you can tell them about the program, as well as you might see on the back of our March Patrol cars, that we have a magnet that identifies the You Have Option Program and encourages people to find out more about their reporting options.
Great. Do you have anything for us, sir?
Not supporting.
That's good. We need all the support we can get. Again, you know, tonight just happens to be that night where we're getting all these proclamations on these services that mean so much to our community, and we have a lot of young women and men that both fall victim to some of these crimes, and without the type of support services that are offered and managed through organizations like our Victim Advocates, thank you, programs, these people wouldn't have those resources and they would struggle with the ability to move on with their lives. And we had the kid program first, now we're getting into what some of the adult impacts as well as kids. But the services that you provide are unmatchable for some of these people, it's life-changing, and that's not through Victim Services only, but through our police department as well. So thank you both for everything and the folks that you work with. Now I'd like to ask the council to come down and we'll take a picture and give you your proclamation. Yes, all the victim advocates in the audience could come up for this one. We do have another proclamation, so I'm going to have Kim come back up, but let's go down and take this picture and then we'll go do it again. All right, we have one more. Thank you for staying at the podium, Kim.
Of course.
This one is Crime Victims Rights Week. I would ask the city attorney, please read the proclamation.
Proclamation 17-04. Whereas providing victims with knowledge of their rights and available services further strengthens their ability to recover by restoring a sense of self-empowerment, whereas a humane response to victims promotes healing and fosters strength in survivors and communities, whereas victims who feel understood and supported are more likely to disclose their victimization, seek services, and participate in the justice process. Whereas a response involving cooperation from community leaders and all professionals who assist victims is essential to serve all victims, especially those who are marginalized, have disabilities, or live in remote locations. Whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 2 to 8, 2017, provides an opportunity to recommit, ensuring that all victims of crime, especially those who are challenging to reach or serve, are afforded their rights. And whereas the City of Commerce City is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim responders, and working for justice for all victims and survivors, now therefore be it resolved that I Sean Ford, Mayor of Commerce City, on behalf of City Council to hereby proclaim April 2nd to 8th, 2017, as National Crime Victims Rights Week in Commerce City.
Great, thank you. I have a motion, or I need a motion, Mr., let's go with Mr. Amador.
Move to approve proclamation 17-04 for National Crime Victims Rights Week.
Okay, and Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion is carried. Again, another one of those pieces that provides so much for victims of crime within our community, and it's the services that you all offer, that we offer through our organizations, that make a difference on people getting back to their lives. And, you know, I talked about the child that was in the landfill, the seven-year-old. There were, there are families, I remember one, I recall, where the 16-year-old girl was killed by her sister's fiance on Christmas Eve in this community. And to imagine what happens to a family that goes through that kind of a crime, the victims that have to deal with that for the rest of their lives. At least there are programs and assistance to try to help. I don't think you can ever get over anything like that, but when something does happen, you're not just out there by yourself. There are means through our organization that allow for some, some hope of stability in the future. So thank you to our police department, our Victim Crimes Unit. It matters a lot what you guys do for our community. Victim Services Organization, it's amazing. I remember one story about a lady that came in, couldn't pay her fines for having some junk in her front yard, and she was cited by the city, she couldn't pay her fines. We as a council allowed her, her one skill set was sewing, and she made blankets, and we allowed her to pay off her fine by making blankets to put in the patrol cars, so when there was a crime that included small children, that the officers had a blanket to help to comfort. to help to comfort that child when they were being dealt with through whatever the situation was. And she made all the blankets and she paid off her debt to the community for her fines for what she had done wrong. And to me, that's real justice. But the benefit to have our officers have those small blankets in their vehicle, that little bit of offering helps a lot in a child's life. So what you guys do and how you do it matter to the residents in this community. So, thank you very much for what you do. I'm going to give you the microphone again, Kim, so that you can add anything you want. I kind of went over the top again, but I want people to understand that there's reasons that we have these, these programs within our organization. If you just save that one kid, you just saved that one sex assault victim, whatever it may be, it makes a difference in who we are as a community.
Absolutely. And since nineteen eighty-one, the nation, the National Crime Victims Rights Week has challenged nations to break down the barriers for justice for victims. Colorado is actually celebrating twenty-five years of having legislation around crime victims, around crime victims' rights. Through the dedicated services of the Brighton and Commerce City Victim Services Unit, last year in two thousand sixteen, we served four thousand four hundred and nineteen victims and witnesses of crime and responded on scene one thousand twenty-one times. In two thousand thirteen, the Commerce City Police Department served five hundred and forty victims. And last year in Commerce City alone, we served two thousand four hundred and thirty-nine for an increase of three hundred percent. So through the dedicated services and the leadership of this organization, we're able to serve more victims this year than we ever have before.
Next item, citizen communication.
So we really appreciate you.
All right, council, one more time. Please join me down front. Per council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the council on businesses and affairs of the city. The city is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before city council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. After you, after you have heard from those people who have signed up to speak, I want to make sure that anybody in the audience who hasn't signed up to speak will get an opportunity. We have two folks who have signed up. I'm going to call you up and you can address the council. Guillermo Serna. Guillermo.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, council. Question.
Your name and address. Name and address real quick, Guillermo.
One four one two two East two hundred and second place, Commerce City, Colorado, eight oh oh two two.
Thank you.
South side of one hundred and fourth. Anyway, will I be able to speak on an ordinance if I speak now?
Not, not if it's coming before the council, and I know which ordinance you're talking about.
Yes.
I would ask you to come in. That's going to take a couple of weeks before it's ready. I know Mr. Shisley can give us a date on what, what day we're going to hear that ordinance. Would be the alcohol distance regulation change?
Uh huh. Okay. All right, well, then I'll speak on the other one.
Okay.
The truck company.
That one we're hearing tonight.
Okay, so then I'll, I'll ask that question.
You need to ask that question tonight during the hearing.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. So we need to make sure that Guillermo gets the opportunity to come up and testify during the hearing this evening with the Crown Enterprises. Second person on the list is Bradley Johnson.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council, councilmen and women, you mentioned something about land use in this. What I have to ask tonight is not directly about land use, but it's going to eventually develop into that, but I'm not here to discuss that.
Right, well, and I happen to live in the same neighborhood, and what you're here to speak on is not an upcoming agenda item that the council has anything planned for. So I think you're safe to, to mention what you need to mention, and then I'll let you know what I know about it and how, what we know and how we, we believe it'll affect you at this particular time.
Okay, thank you. I did speak with Councilwoman Carson on the phone this afternoon about this very topic, and she kind of encouraged me along with former Councilman Benella.
Brad, really quick, name and address.
Oh yeah, Bradley Johnson, one one three one six Lansing Street. And I call it River Run West, but I believe it's officially River Run filing for Henderson.
Okay.
I suspect, Mr. Mayor, you may have gotten this letter from this Reagan Land Services Company regarding this proposed fracking situation somewhere up in the River Run, River Oaks, Stillwater area. There's a lot, there's been a lot of talk, there's a River Run Cares Facebook website, and there's been a whole lot of discussion all over the board whether to do with fracking, and that's not what I'm here about, about that particular issue. But what concerned, our HOA's advice to all of these questions was go out and hire an attorney and have them look into it for you. There's a lot of us who are not very literate and legalese, and there's a lot of us who don't really have the wherewithal. And my, my, my whole question to council tonight is if council would regard the aggregate number of citizens in Stillwater, River Run, four, one, two, and three, River Oaks, and possibly even the dunes, depending on where this actual initial bore site goes, does that constitute enough people to warrant council asking the city attorney's office to look into it on behalf of a fairly large number of citizens?
Well, first of all, what I know of it, and I've had the staff look into it, it's not a fracking situation as of yet. What we all received in that, in those neighborhoods in that area was a lease agreement, if you so choose, to enter into leasing your mineral rights to Ward Petroleum, the legal company being the Reagan company that sent you that, that form.
Yes.
That becomes a private matter between you and Reagan and Ward Petroleum. It's not a city issue. We have no jurisdiction over your private matters when it comes to leasing of your mineral rights. So from that standpoint, the city doesn't have any involvement. What I have done is asked our planning development manager, Chris Kramer, who oversees all of the oil and gas issues that are going on within our community. There are no permits at this time for an oil and gas site, no, no well site. Matter of fact, our staff contacted the company, and they said at this time they don't even have a location for a well site. So I don't want to get behind the curve or ahead of it, but I think right now, all that's being contemplated is individual property rights owners of oil and gas within the area have an opportunity to lease their oil and gas rights or not. That's a personal decision, and the city cannot allow our attorney to give any legal advice to anybody when it comes to those private matters. However, we are monitoring the situation, and if a permit is requested or given for an oil and gas well to go in within our community, we have put together certain policy situations that have to take place, notifying people, setbacks, air and water quality, control measures, those type of things that will be enacted. Impact fees for road damage, I mean, there's a lot of pieces, but right now, the city staff are monitoring the situation because we don't know of any well, nor well site, nor permit. So all, all we know is that residents have received the opportunity to lease their oil and gas rights that they own. Whether there will ever be a well, or whether it'll be in Commerce City or outside of Commerce City, today with horizontal drilling, they could put a well in Adams County and still draw from the resource below some of these neighborhoods that are within Commerce City, where we'll still get notification if it's within a certain proximity of our community. So we are monitoring the situation when it comes to the lease. I would tell you that is a personal decision, a personal matter. I would say, you know, if you have somebody in the family that understands leases or, or anything of that nature, talk to them. Otherwise, the only advice that the city can give to residents when it comes to that situation is that you could go and retain an attorney to advise you whether you should sign it or not. We cannot give that advice.
Okay.
So hopefully that gives you as much information as I have, Brad, and we'll, we'll continue to monitor the situation. I've talked to several people in River Run with a similar concern. I've actually connected them with Chris Kramer. And so from the city's perspective on permitting and oil and gas activity, Chris Kramer is the person to talk to you, and you're more than welcome to reach out to Chris. He's in the audience today. And he can, he can give you what the city does and doesn't do. But I would, I would turn it over to our legal counsel, but I can tell you right now, even if I did, they would just say, we can't advise, we cannot give any legal advice to anybody on a private matter within the city. Okay? That answers my question spot on. Great. Thank you for coming in tonight. Thanks for your time. Thank you. Okay, that's the only two that had signed up. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the city council this evening? Please come forward. I need you to state your name and address for the record when you get up here.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Shirley, and I live at sixty-three ninety Olive Street. I'm here tonight, I'm checking to see what's going on with the intersection there because the accident on January twenty-ninth caused damage to my property, and then there was another accident on February twentieth. A gentleman by the name of Greg, I think he's the police commissioner, Sodaro, I don't know if I'm pronouncing his name right, was helping me. He put up speed trap control units going east and westbound on sixty-fourth.
Okay.
And it controlled the traffic quite a bit, but they took them down on March twentieth, and the speeders have picked up speed lately. And I was wondering if I could get the solar lights around the stop signs, because when there is an accident, it does affect my property if I have to use my homeowner's insurance because apparently people don't have a driver's license or insurance on their car that causes these accidents. That affects me, it affects my homeowner's insurance going, the rates going up, my deductible. And apparently, when I was talking to Mr. Greg Sodaro, apparently I said something wrong to him last time, and he said he had to go, he had another call coming in, he never got back to me.
Very well.
But to me, it's important that something be done to that intersection. Nobody wants a stoplight there, but I think the solar lights would help, because it seems like people that are stopped at the southbound stop sign on Olive, they, for some reason, don't see the traffic in the intersection there. And it does a lot of damage to their car, the car they hit, and if they should hit my property too. And, you know, they're very sorry that the accident happens, you know, and it affects the people, you know, that are involved. I don't know what's going on because, you know, nobody gets back with me. Because I did ask the gentleman Greg, how come the speed limit's thirty-five on the part where I live, but once you cross Plaack and go on that side street here, it's only thirty? I was wondering, you know, why can't they lower the speed limit to thirty maybe? I don't know the answer.
Well, let me try to answer some of your questions. First of all, you know, I, I was recently the victim of property damage myself from uninsured motorists, and we don't ever like to see that. The state has a law, you're supposed to have insurance, and if you don't have insurance and our police department pull you over, you're going to get citation for no insurance. We have our interim chief of police is in the audience tonight. I want him to talk to you. When it comes to traffic control situations like lighting around the intersection or signalization of an intersection, we follow a strict, what they call manual and uniform traffic control devices, which is what sets those speed limits, what sets what kind of lighting, what sets what kind of, whether it needs a signal or not based on the traffic, the volume of traffic, the speed of traffic. And, and our public works department and our engineering department are the ones who assess that stuff. I would ask staff to have public works go out and do an assessment for lighting around those stop signs to make sure that there's adequate lighting, to take care of that particular request. And if our public works department comes back and finds that there is a need for more lighting, then the council can take up whether we are going to appropriate some funds for additional lighting to go into that area. When it comes to someone calling you back or making sure that you're informed, that's something you need to take up with Chief Clint Nichols. And Mr. Nichols is here tonight, chief is here, he's in the back of the room. So when you're done at the podium, I want you to go back and talk to Mr. Chief Nichols, and you can go out in the hallway and address some of the concerns about whether you got follow-up or what follow-up you can have. When it comes to insurance, that's a private matter, similar to the lease agreements that I just talked to the other gentleman about. We cannot, we don't, we have the state regulation that requires people to have insurance. If they don't have that insurance, they have to go before a judge. Then it becomes a judicial matter, and they're going to have to deal with, with fines and punishment. I know how you feel because I was just in the same situation.
But it happens to me a lot. It's, this is not the first time. I've lived there since nineteen ninety-two. There's been quite a few accidents that damaged my property.
I, I, I understand.
Cars damaged my yard.
And I, I understand that, and I can show you a property on Sixtieth Avenue and Olive where people have come down the hill and ran into their house my whole life. So I, I understand, and, and I want it to be a safer intersection. And if they came out and they put up the, the speed trailers that, that show what your speed is and what, and started having some police in the area, police presence to help slow people down, if we need to continue to do some of that, that's what Mr. Chief Nichols needs to know about. That's why you're going to talk to him.
It does affect me a lot, because every time I hear a noise, I'm thinking, oh my gosh, is there another accident out there?
Sure.
I hear this people's speed, I mean, those speed control units did make a big impact.
Absolutely. And so Chief Nichols, will you please have a conversation with this lady after she's done at the podium? I thank you for coming in. Staff has already noted to have our public works department give, to talk to you about lighting and assess the intersection.
I don't think it's going to do any good.
It won't do any good?
They've been there, they won't, they don't think it's important, I don't think.
Well.
This is my opinion. They've came out, they look at it, oh, there's not enough accidents, or how many accidents do I have to have in one year?
Well, just a second. This is the first time I've heard about the street lighting situation.
I'm asking.
I've heard about the signal.
I want the solar lights around the stop signs. Apparently, maybe they don't see them. I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm saying. This is the first time that I've heard about a request to have the lights on the stop signs. I've heard the signal situation.
I've asked other times for them, but apparently it's not.
Well, this is the first time that I'm hearing about it. You might have asked the chief or somebody when you talked to them. I'm directing the staff to look into if we can put those lights. some police in the area, police presence to help slow people down, if we need to continue to do some of that, that's what Mr. Chief Nichols needs to know about. That's why you're going to talk to him.
It does affect me a lot, because every time I hear a noise, I'm thinking, "Oh, my gosh, is there another accident out there?"
Sure.
I hear this people's speed, I mean, those speed control units did make a big impact.
Absolutely. And so, Chief Nichols, will you please have a conversation with this lady after she's done at the podium? I thank you for coming in. Staff has already noted to have our public works department give, to talk to you about lighting.
I don't think it's good doing it.
And assess the intersection. It won't do any good?
They've been there, they won't, they don't think it's important, I don't think.
Well.
This is my opinion. They've came out, they look at it, "Oh, there's not enough accidents," or, "How many accidents do I have to have in one year?"
Well, just a second. This is the first time I've heard about the street lighting situation.
I'm asking.
I've heard about the signal.
I want the solar lights around the stop signs. Apparently, maybe they don't see them. I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm saying. This is the first time that I've heard about a request to have the lights on the stop signs. I've heard the signal situation.
I've asked other times for them, but apparently, it's not.
Well, this is the first time that I'm hearing about it. You might have asked the chief or somebody when you talked to them. I'm directing the staff to look into if we can put those lights on those stop signs. If so, the staff will bring that back to this council to make a determination if we want to spend the money to put the lights on the stop signs. And I absolutely will allow you to be involved in that determination. So, if you would visit with the chief of police, that should get you covered on the police side of things. We're going to get information, and the staff will be contacting you concerning, and you're talking about the lights that go around the outside of the stop signs.
Yes, I've seen them at other places here in Adams County.
Right, Brighton, I've seen some in Brighton. Some of them are flashing, I've seen different kinds. I'll have them look into and assess that for us and bring us back a report, but also communicate that back to you.
I'm sorry, I'm upset.
No, it's okay.
It's, it's, I feel that I'm a victim. I don't want to be told that I live in, on a corner in an intersection, so I should expect accidents to happen.
No, I'm not telling you that. Nobody should expect property damage, and we don't, we want to mitigate as much of that property damage as we can.
We had to put posts around our fence to prevent it, but it still happens.
Yep. I understand that, ma'am.
Because if we didn't have the posts, the cars would probably be in our house.
I understand that as well.
You know.
And if we put signals at every intersection that we have those scenarios, we wouldn't have any money, and we'd have a lot of signals.
I don't know, do solar lights run off electricity?
No, solar lights run off of sun. There's a battery and a solar panel, and it recharges. We will look into, they'll bring back the cost, they'll bring back the warrant, and they will let us know what they find at the intersection. If it will help, I'm absolutely open to considering it.
Okay, I am sorry that I'm upset.
No, you're okay, it's okay. This is where you come when you have a problem, so thanks for coming in tonight.
Okay, you're welcome.
Please visit.
Thank you for listening to me.
Please visit with Chief Nichols.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the city council at this time? Seeing none, we're going to move forward in our agenda. We'll go to approval of the minutes, December 19th, 2016. I'm going to ask for a motion in a second to allow Councilmember Diaz to abstain from voting on the minutes of December 19th because of his excused abscess, absence. Absence. You were excused for going to the dentist with an abscess, right?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Mr. McAdonny.
Move to excuse Councilman Diaz.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second to allow the abstention from Councilmember Diaz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I'm open for a motion to approve the minutes of December 19th. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve the minutes of December 19th, 2016.
Mr. McAdonny.
Second.
A motion and a second on the minutes of December 19th, 2016. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. And we'll take up the minutes of February 6th, 2017. I'm open for a motion to approve those minutes. Mr. Amador.
Move to approve minutes February 6th, 2017.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve February 6th, 2017 minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove specific items to further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are seven items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda for further Seeing none?
I got one.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes. Ordinance 2126, Information Technology.
All right, you're requesting to remove that from the consent agenda?
Yes.
All right, then we only have six left. We're pulling 2126 off for a separate discussion. I will ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. Mr. Bullock.
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the titles of the consent agenda?
The first is ordinance 2124, An Ordinance Amending the 2017 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by Transferring a Portion of the Undesignated Retained Earnings in the Information Technology Fund to the CIPP Fund in the Amount of $174,200 for the Records Information Management Project and Authorizing the Expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2125, An Ordinance Amending the 2017 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by Appropriating a Portion of the Unencumbered Fund Balance of the Water Acquisition Fund in the Amount of $1,787,850 for the Purchase of 4A Water and Authorizing the Expenditure thereof. Resolution 2017-32, Resolution Authorizing Award of Contract for Server, Storage, and Backup Upgrade Services to Sentinel Technologies Incorporated. Resolution 2017-35, Resolution Approving Grant of Parking Easement to South Adams County Fire Protection District. Resolution 2017-37, Resolution Appointing Members to Designated Boards and Commissions of Commerce City. Resolution 2017-39, Resolution Approving Assistance to Commerce City Leased Housing Associates I, LLLP, for the Construction of an Affordable Housing Project.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Titles have been read. All those, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please. For the record, consent agenda is approved. Eight in favor, one abstain, one excused, or one excused absence. All right, now, we're going to take up 2126. Ordinance Amending the 2017 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by Appropriating a Portion of the Designated Return, Retained Earnings in the Information Technology Fund in the Amount of $500,000 for Server Storage and Backup Upgrade Service, including the Provisions of Related Hardware and Software and Authorizing the Expenditure thereof. Councilman Douglas, what are your concerns with ordinance 2126?
Does this include backup for police department with records and body cameras?
We'll have our deputy director of IT, Doug Heineman, answer that question. I do not know the answer.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Doug Heineman, the IT manager. It does not include backups for the body worn camera data. That is backed up by the TASER Corporation in the cloud for their storage. It does include backup for police data that we store.
Okay.
For different police applications.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Douglas?
No, that was it.
Any other questions or concerns on ordinance 2126 from this council? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. McAdonny.
I would move to approve ordinance 2126.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Douglas.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve on first reading, ordinance 2126. City attorney, please read the title.
Ordinance 2126, An Ordinance Amending the 2017 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by Appropriating a Portion of the Designated Retained Earnings in the Information Technology Fund in the Amount of $500,000 for Server, Storage, and Backup Upgrade Services, including the Provision of Related Hardware and Software and Authorizing the Expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Title's been read, I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, eight in favor, one excused absence. Motion is carried. We are moving on now to public hearings, and before we get into our public hearings, I'm going to request to amend the agenda. There is a request to amend the agenda to allow the Crown, the Crown Industrial Park Hearing to be held first. Because they're out of town, this has been held over. Is there a motion to amend the agenda to allow the Crown discussion, our public hearing, to be moved up to this point in time in the agenda? Mr. McAdonny.
Would move to amend the agenda to bring Crown Enterprises to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have that motion and a second to amend the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion is carried. And we'll move into that public hearing for Crown, Crown Enterprises. I'm not going to open this public hearing. I happen to be sick and absent the night of the original hearing, and I've been out of town and have not reviewed all of the documentation, therefore, I am not allowed by law to continue to hear any of the rest of the hearing. So, I will be turning the hearing over to Mayor Protem Bullock to run this portion of the meeting. Once this hearing is done, the staff will come and get me, and I will come in and proceed over the rest of the meeting. So, at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mayor Protem Bullock. I have to wait till he's out of the room. The matter, this matter was continued from March 20th meeting. I'm going to refer to the city attorney for directions on how to proceed with members absent. Okay, that's been taken care of.
Except for.
Huh?
Except for one, Mayor Protem, if I may.
Okay, go right ahead.
Mr. Teeter was also absent in the meeting, so I just wanted to ask him if he had had the opportunity to listen to and review the entire record of the prior hearing.
Yes, sir, I have.
And so, you intended to participate this evening?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to ask for a motion in a second to open the public hearing on a limited basis. Can I?
And, sorry, Mayor Protem, because of comments that Mayor Ford made earlier, I just want to note, my recommendation was to open the public hearing on a limited basis to get the information council had asked about previously, and then to take any written comments that had been received and in the weeks intervening, but if council's desire was to open it up to more comments from the public this evening, that would be council's discretion.
Okay, what is council's wishes? I see none. Mr. Amador.
I'd like to just open it up, if anybody's in the audience, for residents to speak.
Okay, can I get a motion to open it up? Mr. McAdonny?
I'm not prepared to second that motion.
Okay, was that a motion to open it, Mr. Amador?
It was.
Okay, do I have a second? Mr. Diaz.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to open up the public hearing to take a limited testimony from people in the audience and add to the prior public hearing. All those in favor?
Discussion before.
Okay. Okay, Mr. McAdonny, discussion?
I just want to clarify the purpose of opening it up for discussion. We heard testimony from a number of citizens last week. If the same comments were to be made this evening, that would not be in keeping with my understanding of why we would open it up, back up for additional input tonight. The limited nature of the hearing that the city attorney suggested was to allow us to secure the inputs that we requested during the last public hearing, so I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page in terms of why we would be opening this back up. So, if there are new comments to be made, different than comments received last time, that would make sense to me, and I would be supportive of that, but only under those circumstances.
See? Any other comments in response? So, what we're opening it up for is new and additional information, not the same information that we had last time. We don't want to tread in the same water twice. So, I'm, before I take the vote, I'm putting it out there that the information that we are opening up for will be new and pertinent information to what is, we're opening it up for. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Okay, I'm going to refer to the city attorney to start the public hearing with any newer information or.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to note at the outset of the public hearing that staff is prepared to provide a few answers to some of the questions made when the matter was continued. Additional public comment in writing was received, and that's been provided on your desks and in the back of the room, and the applicant had also submitted a letter directed to the city council that is on your desks and at the back of the room as well for consideration. That letter included an offer to contribute an additional amount towards a traffic signal.
Correct.
So, I wanted to draw your attention to that. And then, after the public hearing is closed, I have other comments to make about options, but wanted to hand it over to Mr. Timms and Mr. Kearns.
Okay. Mr. Timms, Mr. Kearns, any, the new information that you've received since the last public hearing?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. Just a couple of slides here for some update information on this development plan case. Again, just a refresher, the subject property is south of 104th, off of Newark Street. The current zoning of the property is I-2, identified here in the vicinity map. The LDC requirements, you remember last time you approved the subdivision that had its own set of criteria? These four here, and A through D, are the four criteria that staff looks at and council will look at for approving a development plan. In terms of last time's meeting, there were a couple of questions, additional questions, and so, staff's done some research. There was a question about, again, the current traffic on 104th and the capacity of 104th with the four lane, and currently, it's at 11,000 average day, average daily trips, and then, the current four lane capacity is 24,000 ADT. In terms of, there was a question raised about, is there a agreement or whether it be written or verbal of a plan to route traffic down to East 96th Avenue? Staff did research, we're unable to locate or aware of any type of agreement. Again, back to your previous map, both East 96th Avenue and East 104th Avenue are both designated as city truck routes, so potentially, either then would be available, as is Highway 2. And then, the estimated construction of a cost of a signal, as a conservative estimate's 375,000. Again, that depends on what type of infrastructure and conduit already exists, but that would be a conservative estimate for a cost of a future signal on Newark, Peoria, and 104th. And with that, that's all I have to add at this time.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for staff? Are you pushing your button, Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Okay, you aren't lighting up down here, so, Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Timms. I had a question I had for you, as far as the traffic study. I visited the area last week and sat there for several cycles and all viewing different vehicles going up and down the road, different times of the day, during the week and the weekend, and as I also looked at their traffic study, and it shows that January of last year, based on the present traffic, as far as the traffic on the northern side coming out of Peoria to 104th, it's deemed that there, you know, it warrants a intersection, I mean, a traffic intersection right now, besides this. a traffic intersection right now, besides this truck terminal coming in, just based on current traffic. And so I, I, it just, I don't know, I just can't get over, I guess, I guess at the, at the point of impact where this would occur with those type of vehicles coming across the road. And, and that's just, you know, number six with the adverse effect of traffic now and in the future. And I understand, you know, this traffic study was based on not the completion of Highway Two, and then we're not sure what's going to happen going west of 104th and 85. And I'm not even going to ask about what would it cost to run a rotor over the Brad Canal to connect with the, the road next to the Diesel Company. I know that'd be in the millions. But no, I'm just, I'm just stuck on the fact that at that point of impact for the community to have trucks, regardless if there's light, is just too close to our silent crossing that was constructed. And the visual point, it, it, a lot of things would have to come down because just sitting there and looking, trying to see the traffic that's going westbound, that, that median would have to be shaved down. I mean, it's, you know, as far as sight, the way it is right now without a, without an intersection. But I just have a hard time because of the point of impact. And I know as, as far as construction now, as far as that silent crossing, it is what it is. It cannot be reconstructed or, or, or shaven down or, or reduced. Is that correct?
Are you, help me, help me clarify your, your question. So regarding the intersection at, at 104th and Peoria, Newark, right?
Yeah.
The, the traffic study, my recollection is, is that the southbound traffic coming up Peoria going eastbound does have a diminished level of service during the peak hour. And likewise, according to their traffic study, northbound on Newark to westbound 104th would have a reduced level of service as well.
Right. So I'm looking at...
Without, without a traffic signal.
Yeah, I'm looking at a map, just, just shows the silent crossing that was constructed, and it is long, and then it has a cutout for a bike or so, for a future trail going northbound and southbound, and then the median continues down to the corner of Peoria Parkway and Newark. And, you know, like I said, based on the traffic study, there's eight conditions. I'd say they meet seven. It's just that adverse effect of that, of the traffic impact and the way things are constructed as of now. So in order to put that light in there, I think things would have to come out of there, but it's just an odd shaped intersection as it is right now.
If I might, if I might ask a clarifying question. Mr. Douglas, are you asking what would be required to install a traffic signal at the intersection?
I guess, I guess that would be the clarifying question, because if you bring the map up, it's not really built to add intersection. You would have to reconfigure that in order to make a next, a, a moving, full movement in that intersection.
That's always possible. We do know from information we collected several weeks back that the intersection does meet warrants currently for the installation of a traffic signal. So any traffic signal installation would include any modifications that are necessary to the intersection. My understanding is that the improvements on 104th were installed to facilitate the installation of a traffic signal, but it's always possible when the actual signal design is done that some modification of the intersection might be necessary.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. McAdonie?
Can we put the Google map back up that we, that I asked for?
This one?
No.
Or do you, or do you want me to?
I think we need to look at the current Google satellite map. I want to make sure that we're all clear on Mr. Douglas's observation, because my understanding is this, traffic control would be at Peoria, not at Niagara. Is that correct?
That's Peoria.
So Peoria is engineered today for signal. In fact, it has the mounts in each corner to accept signal posts, and that intersection is engineered with the appropriate turn and cross movements.
We certainly believe it is, but when an actual traffic signal design is done, it's possible that some modifications might be necessary.
Absolutely. I, I guess my thought is, one of the opening comments from staff was regarding a letter that we've received from Crown regarding an enhanced commitment to help contribute to the delivery of said signal. So I'm not sure why we're...
Well, just the way it is right now, I'm just, you know, just, our other sections that we did up here, Peoria, I'm sorry, Potomac and 104th, we didn't have to change any modifications to those medians. The way they were set, it was easy to go ahead and put the intersection without having any modifications.
That, that's why I've asked, and I'm sorry, we shouldn't be talking back and forth. So I've asked for this to be pulled up on current satellite map, and I'm not sure. I'm, I'm looking at Google. I know you're looking at Bing. They have slightly different context. But if I look at, if I look at the Google map at Peoria, it is, to my non-engineer eye, engineered for, for this. So I, I just want to be, and I think Mr. City Manager reiterated that any agreement regarding traffic control at this intersection would include the physical light and any engineering, i.e., hard surface changes to accommodate the movements necessary. Are we agreed?
Yeah.
Okay. That, that was my only, oh, actually, relative to the, the traffic, and thank you for getting those numbers formally for us. I know you guys were able to raise those last week or last meeting. Do we have anything that gives us distribution by time of day, even in rough terms, in terms of how that current 11,000 vehicles is distributed through the day? I know that's an aggregate number for the, for the reporting period.
Staff's not, we don't have that.
Okay. Either way, I think when we get down to it, the, the data that we received in the traffic study from the applicant breaks down residential, or I'm sorry, personal vehicle versus truck traffic. And when we look at the, you take those numbers roughly divided out by the operating hours of that facility, which are effectively round the clock, you're talking about a handful of vehicles, you know, per minute, per hour, per day. I guess the concern I have when we, we're talking last meeting about this and, and some of the comments I just heard a moment ago, with that line of logic, any development at this intersection? Sorry.
I just wanted to remind that the public hearing is still open.
True, yeah, I'm sorry.
And if there are any questions, I've, there's been a lot of comments.
I will, I will hold those comments. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is all discussion, you've got to remember, during the public hearing, no discussion is pertinent except to staff about what they just gave us as a presentation. Mr. Amador?
I just want to thank staff for providing the three specified bullet points that we have to clarify some things in my mind. During the last meeting, we heard a bunch of different things, and so it's very important for me to state that, the traffic count and what that looks like, one. Two, there, we couldn't find an agreement on diverting traffic to 96th off 104th. And three, the estimated construction costs of where we are today with what the improvements of that intersection will look like. So I had, I have concerns, and I had concerns, and this kind of puts some things and the pieces to the puzzle in my mind where we're at. So I just wanted to say thank you, staff, for providing the information to help solidify an educated decision on my part.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. Also, staff, I'd like to thank you also. These are the things I was looking to hear an update on. I did review the, go to the site today at 2:00 and to bring myself up to speed also on what it'll look like in that location. It's like anything else, we're going to have to deal with the roads when the time comes, and I'm sure we'll take the appropriate steps to put the lights in when the time comes that we're going to need them there.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I have another question, too. This is to the potential, the potential buildout of Peoria on the other side. And do you have any, have there been any inquiries about the buildout on the other side of Peoria, where Peoria and Newark and 104th is on the northeast, northwest side?
The buildout in terms of uses or traffic?
Uses.
Or road?
Yeah.
All the above?
Yeah, the uses and also the condos, if there's going to be increase in the residential as well on the Aberdeen property.
So, so the, the land on the northeast quadrant of Peoria will be commercial, well, is currently zoned commercial? And up, basically up in this section up here, once you get after where Peoria kind of turns and goes over I-76, all the area up there is designated currently mixed use. That could be a combination of commercial or office or residential.
Okay. And then I also noticed on the map, we had truck traffic that went to 112th, from 100, sorry, 104th to, to Peoria, up to 112th was also a truck route. Can we change that truck route to be not included as part of the truck route? They would have to go to another area, so that's not an impact of trucks going north or south on Peoria from 104th? Is that a possibility?
On, on the, you're referring to this from last presentation, the traffic impact? Is that right?
Right.
Based on, on this, they actually have 0% tractor trailer moving north, at 10% is like employee cars.
Oh, I'm sorry, not, not based on, on, on Crown's route, I'm talking about...
Just in, in general?
Yeah, the city, we have a map of the city.
I don't, I don't know the process for reassigning truck routes within the city.
Mr. Sheasley and I were just pulling up the map from last, the last meeting two weeks ago, where Public Works provided a map of truck routes. I don't know the answer to that, how that truck route map, the process for altering it. We'd be happy to research that and bring that back at a, at a future meeting. I don't think we'll be able to answer that this evening for you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions to staff from council? Okay, I guess that next I would go to the applicant, if he has anything new to add
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, councilmen, council. My name is Daniel Anafre. I'm with Crown Enterprises from our home office, 12225 Stevens in Warren. And in the spirit of just focusing on new information since last meeting, I would like to just provide some narrative to Crown's latest offer for funding of the signal. As you recall, previously, we had increased the amount of our calculated portion of that signal from a calculated amount of about $17,000, $1,780 to a, an amount of $50,000, and that would be a non-refundable amount provided to the city for the purposes of installing the signal. Since that time, since our last meeting, Crown has provided the city, for consideration, a second option, and that would be funding up to an amount of $300,000. That would include all fees calculated per the ordinance and a balance of that amount to, up to $300,000 for funding of the signal with a reimbursement agreement per the terms of, of the city. We feel this adequately addresses the concern that we've all been talking about these past weeks and months, and something that provides for something that, quite frankly, the city's very thoughtfully planned for over the, this administration and previous administrations, and that is the growth of Commerce City through its commerce, through its comprehensive plan and its zoning ordinance and its infrastructure. It's all led up to this time. It, it's, it's time for a developer to develop this portion of the city, and any development on this property, anything other than status quo, will generate traffic. And we've all focused on the, on the issue, the open item, and that is the signal. And Crown has offered to participate with the city because we, we would benefit from the signal as much or perhaps more than anyone else in the city. So with that, I'm, I'm available for questions, and I thank the council for their consideration.
Okay. Any questions from council? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you very much. I have a, a question here on the traffic impact. I notice your peak hour generation is one hour between 6:30 and 8:30 a.m. and one hour between 4:00 and 6:00. And my concern in traffic and hours, impact, is there any way that you can change those hours from 4:30 a.m. to 6:30, and then from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.?
I can ask Mr. Kincaid to speak further on that, but Central Transport, the tenant of this property, is a service provider, so much of their traffic is, is the result of their customers. Morning traffic is, is scheduled to correspond with their, their customers' scheduled pickups and deliveries. Now, I would say that over the two hours in the morning, two hours in the evening, it's, it's relatively small in, in quantity during that time, so vehicles would be leaving three or four during the course of a 30-minute period, so it's not an all-out exit through the gate.
Right. No, I, I understand that. I'm just, just trying to see where this would fit, because I, and I understand about this coming in and, and as far as development and knowing that there's going to be future development across the street. So either now or later this is coming in, but it's just the impact that's, that's going to make with the type of, with the type of vehicles. And so my ask is, is there any movement as far as the peak time? I'm, I'm sure you can't answer that, but the gentleman here, I'm sure he probably could, or even just kind of work with that timing. Those are high-traffic times, and people are moving in the intersection right now that goes east and west on Highway Two and 104th. It's not, you know, as far as timing, we had to make some adjustments there as well, but it's just, there's a lot of cars moving, coming and going, and, you know, people going to work, and, you know, there's, there's, there's business happening. So I'm just, just asking because of the point of impact, if there can be any adjustment to start, just to kind of ease things in, maybe a six-month period or so, or three months, or nine months?
Well, you, you bring up a good point, and, and that is, the, the, the traffic report that we've provided and, and the study and, and the volumes that we're, we're showing are based on what we're designing, and that is a 100-door cross-dock facility. Central Transport's currently operating at 28 doors. They're a bit overwhelmed at that location, but in fairness, they're, they're probably operating a 40-door terminal. So what we're proposing is, won't be complete, assuming we're successful in getting an agreement and approval by, by this council. We're, we're still end of this year before they even show up and Truck One leaves the gate.
Okay.
From that point, it's probably a 12-month ramp-up to the volumes you're seeing in our traffic report. So that puts us near January first quarter of 2019.
Okay.
Now, further, I, I can only say that the drivers are going to find the easiest way and the easiest time. They, they do have customers to serve. way and the easiest time, they, they do have customers to serve, but if, if leaving ten minutes earlier or ten minutes later helps them start their day, then they'll certainly make those adjustments, but I, I couldn't, I couldn't guarantee anything beyond that.
All right, appreciate that.
As council, any other councilman members have questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, okay, now I'm going to ask if there's any new testimony from the audience, that anybody in the audience that has anything new that wasn't going over at the last public hearing, if you come to the podium and give your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Teresa Eskridge, 10553 Joplin Street, Commerce City. I used to live in River Run, so I was on Peoria a lot, and now I live in Buffalo Mesa, but my question, was there a traffic study done in regards to the train? Because if you ever get stuck behind that train at peak hours, it's horrible, you're stuck forever. That's my only question.
And I can answer that, no, because a lot of times, we don't know the schedule of the train, and we have asked before, when is their peak time for trains? And our, the answer we received was all day and all night. So basically, it is, and they don't have to answer to anyone, they run the trains, they have basically domain over domain, so I'm going to leave it at that, no, we, I wish we could figure out when the trains went through at a peak time, so we could figure out a traffic study on them, but no ma'am, there hasn't been.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have any new comments? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Okay. Now, I'm going to ask if there's any discussion that is new from council to disclose for this public hearing. Mr. McAdonnie.
I think it's important to acknowledge the concerns we're hearing regarding traffic. We would be falling short of our duty if we weren't considering those things, and as we just heard from Ms. Eskridge, the question regarding the trains, that's a variable that we, we don't have great insight or control into. I did share some ideas with the city manager offline regarding thoughts on how we could potentially do some data collection about activity at, at our various rail slash road crossings, but those don't have bearing in this discussion. I think my concern, I'm, I'm gonna hold that comment. Thanks.
Anyone else from council have any comments? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you Mayor Protem. Just my concern with the citizens, they, they, they address it well as, as, as far as the traffic impact there, and that, you know, we look at this and just, just hearing from the applicant, that this wouldn't really ramp up until 2019, that we, that just, just as a railroad, we, we have concerns, we have a hard time for our citizens to communicate with the railroad. That's why, you know, we go to Washington, we advocate, we always talk about how, what, how our problems are with the rails, with the trains stopping on the tracks. That's very problematic for our citizens on their daily commute back and forth in this area of, of Commerce City. I would say to the applicant that be more open in, in, you know, as far as operation, where this passes or not, just cut, as far as traffic impact, and if there is impact, if there's any input from, from citizens, while this is in the process of being operational, that you communicate with the city, if there's any kind of problems that you try to advocate to make sure you're being good, good stewards as far as having those type of machineries on the road. You know, and getting people to understand as far as the traffic and everything, eleven thousand vehicles up and down, down there already, I know this is a very small impact, like I said, it's just the product that's being put on there. So I think if, if it's really transparent with our residents, to get them to understand what's gonna happen, because across the street, just as our, our, Mr. Thames has told us, there's gonna be commercial on that side as well, not knowing what the residential's gonna be for Aberdeen. And so I just, you know, I'm here as a voice, as we all are, for our citizens, for the safety and health and welfare of our citizens, so I just make that very, very clear, that, you know, I, I, we, like, like all of us, we represent our voters, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes, thank you Mayor Protem. My point of view on this is, this is the area we designated for industrial, this is the area we designated to grow in, and it doesn't matter if this is a Crown Container Group in there, or a bunch of Volkswagens in there, this is the area we designated for these companies to, to build in and expand in. And it is, so, that, that's where I'm at, I'm behind this, this area for that same reason, thank you.
Mr. Amador?
I just think it's important to say that watching this thing transpire and hearing the residents and listening to the testimony that's here, and then also looking at the findings, and it's a use by right. My biggest concern was the traffic, and I will call the traffic piece, based on the traffic study, nominal, which has, it's, it's a tough decision for me in my mind, because I definitely am torn between the residents and what that looks like, where the master plan with the city is, as Rick stated, and whether it is Crown Enterprises or another business, I have to take the emotion out of it, and I'm gonna be in support of the project.
Okay. In trying to figure out what would be similar to this, I went to two other sites that were similar to what we were speaking about. Fifty-sixth Avenue here between Quebec and Peoria, where there's trucking companies right on Havana, a school, and then housing, and then we get down to Quebec Street where during the morning, I can say there's at least eleven to fifteen thousand cars going one direction, and in the evening, it's the same number going a different direction. And I sat and I watched the flow, and I made sure I went at the peak times when I hate to be out there. So it was usually between four-thirty and six, and in the morning, I went there at seven-thirty in the morning and sat and watched all the trucks leaving the docks up here on, at the Havana Street, going east and west, watched King Supers coming out from, off Havana, going west on Fifty-sixth, and watched the interflow of the cars, intermingling with the school traffic, plus all the homes that are right over here to our south. And I started counting trucks, how many trucks that I saw and everything, and was it a problem? And I said, okay, this may not be a good study right here, because this is going too well, so I gotta go find someplace that actually looks like it isn't working. So I went over here in front of Holly Park, and I sat by Pioneer Park, and I sat there at seven-thirty in the morning and watched all the trucks leaving from Dominion, coming down to Sixtieth, turning left, and going down to highway, the big intersection right down there, Sixty, the Sixth and Eighty-Five. And we have Holly Park that has numerous residents with kids, two blocks down the street, we have Central Elementary School that all the kids walk to, and we have the park where everybody comes, and they don't drive to it in the morning, a few do, but most of them walk to it and walk around the park for exercise or with the dogs. One day that I did go, and it was cold, nothing was happening, but then I made it a point to go on a day when it was nice in the morning, or what we would consider nice, it was around about thirty-five degrees, but it was sunny, and the interaction worked very well. And so I kept saying to myself, okay, when Crown is done, Highway Two will be done, we will have a light there, we will be working to work a project that's going to work for our city. Every project has problems, and especially growing pains, but if we're going to be that quality community for a lifetime that we claim to be, we've got to take those growing pains and grow with them and become the city that we want to grow up to be. So I foresee that we might have some traffic, but I foresee that people are going to figure out how to deal with it, because if you go out here at seven-thirty in the morning and watch Fifty-sixth Avenue, everyone knows how to deal with it, and there's more than one light that they have to work through, and there's sights that you cannot see when you're turning off a certain ones to go east or west, coming off of Central Park Boulevard, because there's an elevation difference and everything. So I foresee that this is ideal, whose time has come for that area, because that's what we zoned it for. Seeing no further comments, I'm going to ask for a motion and a second on one of the draft resolutions provided for council. Mr. McAdonnie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I would move that we approve conditionally Resolution 2017-17, approving the development plan, with the condition regarding the applicant's contribution to delivery of the signal and intersection improvements.
Option two to three hundred thousand?
Correct.
Okay.
As, as they outlined for us this evening.
And may I just clarify, Mr. McAdonnie, I think you may have said moved to conditionally, I just wanna make sure that the...
I'm sorry, it would be approved with condition, the condition of, of applicant contribution.
I may have heard it incorrectly, I just wanted to make sure the approval wasn't.
Sorry, I flipped the words, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from council? Mr. City Attorney, would you read the title?
Resolution conditionally approving development plan D-305-17, number 2017-17.
The title's been read, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. I have seven, six, one, two, three, four, five, six, six ayes and one nay. The motion, the resolution passes. Okay, now do we go get the mayor? Please say yes.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I, I just wanna thank the applicant for...
Thank you.
For working and, along with this conversation, obviously, also wanna thank you on behalf of council and the community for your enhanced contribution to helping deliver the improvements of that intersection. Appreciate you and welcome to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock, for, you messed up all my stuff here, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
Thanks.
You didn't have it out to my...
Yeah, well. Thank you for handling that public hearing for me. Moving forward in our agenda to the, let's see here, are we gonna go back now? To Resolution, no, that, that, you just did Resolution twenty-one, twenty, two-zero-one-seven dash one-seven? CU dash twenty-one dash nine-one dash nine-four dash nine-six dash nine-seven dash one-seven. I'm gonna open the public hearing. And I'm gonna remind the council members to ask questions only during the hearing. So I'd like to ask the staff to come forward, give their presentation. Right ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. Your next case this evening is Case CU dash twenty-one dash ninety-one dash ninety-four dash ninety-six dash ninety-seven dash seventeen. The request is by LG Everest to amend and/or remove certain conditions that were attached to the original conditional use permit. Subject property this evening is seventy-three Twenty-One East Eighty-Eighth Avenue. Subject property is currently zoned I-three, it's located just north of Eighty-Eighth Avenue, there is the UP rail, rail line to the east, the O'Brien Canal along the north and west edge, and then the Flea Market just on the other side of the canal as well. City's comprehensive plan for this area is for general industrial uses. This is an aerial of the subject property, again, Eighty-Eighth Avenue to the south, with the O'Brien Canal along the west and north of the property. This is an image of the subject property looking to the northeast from East Eighty-Eighth Avenue with their landscaping installed. Brief history, the conditional use permit was originally approved back in nineteen ninety-one, that allowed for sand and gravel operations, rock crushing operations, a concrete batch plant and an asphalt batch plant. That original approval was given, subject to eighteen conditions, and as one can gather with all the different suffixes, it has been amended a few times over the years. The First Amendment occurred in nineteen ninety-four, that was a conditioned compliance in order to allow an asphalt bat, batch plant that was not a wholly owned subsidiary of LG Everest. The conditional use permit was amended again in nineteen ninety-six to establish certain use areas on the subject property for additional clarity. At that time, nine of the conditions were amended and one condition was added, bringing total to nineteen conditions. And then in nineteen ninety-seven, again, there was a conditioned compliance request in order to allow an antifreeze recycling business on the property that was not owned by LG Everest, and at that time, two additional conditions were added, totaling twenty-one conditions that are attached to the property today. The applicant's request is to remove and/or amend certain conditions that are no longer necessary or relevant, or have been satisfied. This reduces paperwork, reduces city staff time, it also reduces unnecessary hearing burdens on the subject property. There's a detailed analysis of the existing conditions provided in the packet for council this evening, this is just a brief summary, that the existing conditions are mostly development-related, things to like landscaping must be installed, or improvements for paving the entrance to the property, screening, certain requirements, a lot of items that are currently required and, and necessary via the Land Development Code. The conditions that date back from the mid to late nineties are a reflection of the development standards at that time and the lack thereof within the zoning ordinance at that time, and it's, these are not uncommon conditions from that era that have been satisfied and are, and are no longer necessary. So in summary, they're proposing to amend two of the existing conditions, to update language to be more current, to remove thirteen of the twenty-one conditions that have been completed, and keep six of the existing twenty-one conditions related to operations, hours of, of operation, use areas, those sorts of things would be unchanged, and eight conditions would be left on the subject property. In terms of impacts on the existing CUP, those uses that were approved in the original conditional use permit from ninety-one, ninety-four, ninety-seven, would still be allowed to operate, subject to the, the remaining conditions on the property and, and compliance with those regulations. Proposed future uses that would require a conditional use permit would still be required to get them, there, there would be no exception for that. One of the benefits for staff and for the applicant is that proposed future uses by right on the subject property would be allowed... right on the subject property would be allowed, like any other I-three property, as a use by right, without going through a public hearing process in front of city council. And LG Everest is still accountable for conditions related to things like their hours of operation, them having a hazmat plan, those sorts of things. In reviewing the request, both the development review team and the planning commission reviewed the request against the approval criteria for conditional use permits. That information is provided on the screen in front of you, as well as outlined in the staff report. In terms of contact, to date, staff has not been contacted by anyone regarding this request. And on March seventh of this year, the planning commission did vote five to nothing to forward a recommendation for approval to city council, subject to the amended conditions. And that would conclude staff's presentation. However, staff and the applicant are both available for any questions you all may have.
Thank you. Is there any members of council that have any questions for our staff at this time? Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Presently, the way it looks, the map, this is an open aggregate pit-type area, right? Just stockpiles of products?
There are stockpiles of materials on the property, and that was part of what was approved with the original conditional use permit back in ninety-one.
All right. Has there been any complaints around any of the businesses as far as dust or smells or?
To date, staff has, and we did research, we have not received any complaints from either adjacent businesses or residents in the area.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
No questions.
No questions? All right. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward. Do you have anything to add to the presentation? The city staff has already presented.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Lynn Mayer Schultz of LG Everest, Seventy-three Twenty-One East Eighty-Eighth Avenue, the subject property. I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Workman for his presentation, and he covered everything quite well, and we agree with the changes to the conditions.
Thank you. Is there any questions for the applicant from the city council at this time? Mr. Teeter?
Yes, thank you for coming forward tonight with this. Today, I did go into your facility and view what was going on over there. I was curious to see how the other operations in there looked and operated. I was extremely pleased to see how clean it is back in there, how well it's organized, your safety routes. And it looks to me like you've got a real good operation back there with all your different businesses, and you're keeping on top of them. I guess I do have one question for you. I did see a large pile of asphalt. Is that what you're, you buy that, or is that what you're planning on doing, making your own piles of asphalt?
That is actually the remainder of a tenant that has moved out, and they, it was a lot bigger. And they have removed quite a bit of it. They moved up to Ninety-Sixth and Dallas, and have moved a lot of their operations up there.
Terry Woodworth, LG Everest. The pile you're referring to is shingles.
Oh, it's shingles?
Recycled. It'll be used in asphalt, but it'll be hauled off of our premises to another plant to be used, is what that pile you're referencing.
Okay, I was curious if that was asphalt over there, or what that was.
It is asphalt, but it's asphaltic shingles.
Well, I think you're, it's a very nice facility down there, and it's well-handled and well-run. I'll be supportive of it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant from council? Saying none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the city council on this case? Saying none. If there's no further councils from, no further questions from council, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Open for discussion with the city council. Is there any discussion? Mr. Teeter?
Sorry, Mayor.
No, that's all right. Mr. McAdonny?
Sorry, no discussion. Prepare to make a motion.
Go ahead and make your motion.
I'd move that we accept the facts and findings of the planning commission on CU dash twenty-one dash ninety-one dash ninety-four dash ninety-six dash ninety-seven dash seventeen.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion, second, to approve the findings and recommendations of the planning commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Open for a motion to approve the conditional use permit. Mr. Bullock? Move to approve the conditional use permit twenty-one dash ninety-one dash ninety-four dash ninety-six dash ninety-seven dash seventeen. Council is seated. Mr. McAdonny?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. With the city attorney, please read the title.
CU two-one-nine-one-nine-four-nine-six-nine-seven-one-seven. Conditional use permit for a sand and gravel operation, rock crushing operation, concrete batch plant, and asphalt batch plant.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion, a second. Title's been read. I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried.
Mayor Ford?
Yes, sir.
Before you move on to the next agenda item, I wonder if I might take a moment. Paul Workman has humbly served the city since February of two thousand and eight. This is the last time he will appear before city council. He's been snatched away by the town of Parker, where he's moving on to a higher-level position, so we certainly wish him well, but we'll miss him terribly. I thought you would want to know, this is the last time that he will be appearing before you.
Thank you, Mr. McBroom. Appreciate that.
That's really nice, Mr. McBroom, but how'd you allow that to happen? Now, you had specific orders, there's certain personnel you don't let go.
I thought we had the franchise tag on him, but apparently not.
Yeah, well, my friend, Mike Wade, I'll give him a call and warn him about some things, but you'll be in good hands. Mike's a good guy, and you'll be with a good organization, and we appreciate everything you've done for Commerce City.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. McBroom. I do sincerely appreciate that. Not many know, but Mr. McBroom and I, first day at the city was the same day, so we've shared a lot of experiences together. There's a lot of really great things ahead for this community. I'm certainly invested, and I will be watching from afar, so thank you.
You're not a Michigan fan, are you?
No.
At least you don't have that in common. All right, thanks again.
Thank you.
Moving on in the agenda, we have a public hearing case Z six-six-zero dash nine-seven dash nine-nine dash zero-zero dash zero-three, parents two, dash one-seven. I'm opening the public hearing. Remind the council to ask questions only during the public hearing. Like to ask staff to come forward and give their presentation.
Pardon for the interruptions. Just loading up the applicant's PowerPoint. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate getting to be here. Robin Kearns with Planning, here to present this zoning case for what is known as the Mountain View Park Industrial, Mountain View Industrial Park. It is located at Ninety-Sixth Avenue and Havana Street. We have an applicant of BMW Construction Company, and we are here for a PUD zone document amendment. The vicinity map helps us see the subject three parcels, subject of the zoning tonight, but the Mountain View Industrial Park, if you're, as you're probably aware, is this larger area going up Havana to the O'Brien Canal, and then back down to Ninety-Sixth and across, excluding this ag piece of property here. To the east, we have the Eagle Creek PUD, and this area is designated industrial distribution by our future land use plan. The subject key parcels are currently vacant. The applicant is requesting this amendment to the Mountain View Industrial Park, and the amendment is proposed to allow an I-one use to the existing C-two uses that are, or what are known as general retail in the PUD on the three subject lots. Currently, these three parcels are dictated or governed by Amendment Three. There have been numerous amendments and revisions to this PUD. And currently, under Amendment Three, they are allowed the general retail or C-two uses, and they're also required a greater level of architectural design for the commercial uses. And the design behind this is in relationship to being near the high intersection of Highway Two and Ninety-Six, so that there was a higher-level visual architectural design, and also allowing the retail closer to the Eagle Creek residences, which is one of our first residential areas in the Northern Range. The proposed zoning would permit both an industrial I-one use and the existing general retail C-two uses, but it would also maintain the current commercial development standards. The PUD design, as I was just describing, put the retail closer to the intersection of Highway Two and Ninety-Six, and put the higher-intense I-two level uses and zone properties to the north and west, which is closer to our existing industrial development in that corridor. The PUD located these three commercial closest to that intersection in order to accommodate and be more in a relationship to the Eagle Creek residential area. The subject lots have been on the market for approximately twenty years and have not gained the ability to develop. And all, almost all the industrial lots in this PUD have developed or under development review, or have permits pending. The PUD document is something to note, that per city's request, because of all the numerous amendments, this PUD has become very difficult to govern. Each lot, you have to look almost at a different amendment. Thus, the applicant has provided a document that essentially consolidates all the previous amendments into one document, and incorporates the new regulations for these three lots, so that staff can go to one document to see what they need to in order to help govern this area. This is the map out of this amendment number five, so it does include all the parcels, but it basically shows their history, so, and all that information is within the document, and then highlights these three subject lots and their new design. Well, the design standards are the same, but the new use allowance. The views are looking north, we're seeing existing development. East, we're looking at the Eagle Creek and Highway Two. Looking south, there's some existing Adams County and a few developed lots there. And then to the west is, again, looking into Mountain View. The proposed I-one and C-two zoning are appropriate for the neighborhood, and this is coming from our PC and planning commission analysis conducted last month. Properties are identified in future land use plan as industrial distribution. They are located along heavily traveled principal arterial and major collector roadways, and they will maintain their architecture and level of site use that is currently approved while allowing additional I-one uses. This will, this application would facilitate the future development of these properties to occur. In review of the applicable land development code, twenty-one dash three-two-five-one PUD zone document criteria, this meets seven of seven applicable criteria. Number two is not applicable. Regarding public notification, as of today, staff has received no response from the public or public notice. On March seventh, planning commission voted five to zero to recommend to the city council vote to approve the requested PUD zone document amendment. And staff is available to answer your questions, and the applicant is also present and able to speak on behalf. Thank you.
The applicant like to come forward and give a presentation or add to what the staff has just walked us through?
Thank you. We did. Do you have the PowerPoint? Oh, okay.
He's on.
It's on? Ah, okay.
Good evening. My name is Corey Miller. I am a planner with Baseline Engineering Corporation. Our address is nineteen-fifty Ford Street, Golden, Colorado, eight-zero-four-zero-one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Again, my name is Corey Miller, and I'm a planner with Baseline Engineering Corporation. I assisted Mr. Whiting, the applicant, with his application for rezoning through the rezoning process. Mr. Whiting is in attendance tonight. It should be noted that the other property owners for the other two parcels are not in attendance. However, they've given us their authorization to act on their behalf, and we've been updating them through the process as the application has moved forward. We've created just a couple slides for you tonight. Obviously, we'd like to extend our appreciation to planning staff and Mr. Kearns. We feel like his PowerPoint presentation went over all the key facts in good detail, in that we find no objection with anything that staff has presented in their staff report or in their PowerPoint presentation. But we did put together just a couple slides to show our perspective of the summary of the PUD rezoning request, which I'll go through now. This slide provides an excerpt of the PUD document site plan as amended. I've circled all of the PUD lots in red, as Robin also mentioned. Most, if not all, of these parcels currently promote an I-one or an I-two use for development of these lots. And in fact, the only three lots, to my knowledge, that do not promote an I-one use or an I-two use are the three that are subject to this rezoning application, of which I've highlighted in blue. Mr. Whiting is the recent purchaser of Lot One of Block One, which is the central parcel that you see on that map. And if approved, his intention would be to develop a light industrial building on the lot. We understand that these lots are currently zoned for commercial uses, and we have great respect for that. That's why we've worked with staff to ensure that the commercial uses will remain, and that the additional development regulations will be attributed to any development on the parcel, whether it be a commercial use or an industrial use. So the design aesthetic of the parcel with landscaping and buffery will be higher than what is typically proposed for an I-one use. But we also respect the fact that these three parcels have been on the market for a substantial number of years, as Mr. Kearns mentioned, and it's been difficult to market them for commercial uses or for commercial development. And then finally, I just provided a small concept of the, of the light, the site plan development. This is coming from a concept sketch plan, but again, the intention is to develop a light industrial building of approximately eighteen thousand square feet. And we provided this to more or less show that we've reviewed the proposed building against the development regulations and the site regulations, and we'd like to, you know, suggest that the light industrial use can be accommodated on the subject parcels, should the application be approved. And with that, again, I'd like to thank planning staff. I'd like to thank you for your time. We appreciate the recommendation of approval from both staff and the planning commission, and I and Mr. Whiting are happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for staff or the applicant at this time? Mr. Bullock?
No, sir.
Saying none, thank you. Is anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and address the council on this case? Saying none. If there's no further questions from council, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion from council? Okay, I'm open for a motion on the findings and recommendations of the planning commission. Mr. Bullock? So move. Mr. McAdonny?
Second.
And I just want to clarify for the record that this is to accept the findings and recommendations?
Mr. Motion Maker?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a motion, a second, to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning commission on Z six-six-zero dash nine-seven dash nine-nine dash zero-zero dash zero-three, parents two, dash one-seven. Just to make things clear.
That's exactly what I made the motion on.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Commission on Z six-six-zero dash nine-seven dash nine-nine dash zero-zero dash zero-three, print two dash one-seven, just to make things clear.
That's exactly what I made the motion on.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion on the amendment to the PUD. Mr. McAldonny?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the amendment to Z six-six-zero nine, dash nine-seven dash nine-nine dash zero-zero dash zero-three, print two dash seventeen.
All right. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion of second. The city attorney, please read the title.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Ordnance Z dash six-six-zero dash nine-seven dash nine-nine dash zero-zero dash zero-three, print two dash one-seven, and ordinance approving the Mountain View Industrial Park PUD Zone Document Amendment Number Five.
Let's for a roll call vote. Eight in favor, one excused absence. Next item on the agenda is ordinance Twenty-One Twenty-One. Does the city council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this ordinance? Saying no one, I'm open for a motion. Mr. McAldonny?
Mr. Mayor, I would look, move to approve or introduce ordinance Twenty-One Twenty-One on first reading. Council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. The city attorney, please read the title.
Ordnance Two-One Two-One, an ordinance amending Section Two dash four-two-zero-two of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code regarding surplus, contraband, and unclaimed property.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call. Sorry, roll call. After those public hearings, that just seemed simple for the boys' votes. All right, eight in favor for the record, one excused absence. We'll move on to administrative council business. Do you have one thing I want to bring before the council? I have a letter that will be distributed to each of you. If it's not already at your, your place, Mr. McBroom will bring it up. Looking for approval to send this letter over to South Adams?
Mr. Stewart.
From the city council rather than from staff. Basically, what it says, and you will have a copy of it in front of you, what it says is right now, the Water District has a regulation that requires all inline commercial developments to have individual water and sewer lines and individual meters to individual units rather than to the building. And that has, over, over the time, has been cumbersome for the city to recruit and try to bring in new retail businesses to our community because of costs associated with the extra amount of lines that have to go to these inline commercial facilities when in most areas, most communities allow one master meter and, and that development to be served in that manner, and one master sewer. It puts us at a disadvantage from the prospect of, of drawing new business into our area for this type of use. And if you're all acceptable with the request on this letter, we'll have the, it's already signed by me, but we'll have the city send it over to South Adams. And from my understanding, city manager's already talked to Jim Jones. Jim Jones has already said they would be taking it to their Board of Directors next week. Go ahead, Brian.
Yes, I think they have a Board of Directors meeting next week. Although, as we talked at the staff level earlier, another alternative would be to refer this to the Water Commission. That wouldn't be a bad option either. The staff has talked to Mr. Jones about presenting it right to their Board of Directors. Out of a bit of a sense of urgency, we do have some projects pending that are impacted by this policy. But it's not an intentional effort to necessarily sidestep the Water Commission meeting just out of, out of an interest to try to move the issue along a little bit quicker.
And Mr. McBroom brought this to my attention this afternoon, and I told him because of the timing of the matter, to wait till the next Water Commission and then get it on the agendas and then go from there. If it's a timing thing and we have the potential to lose potential business in our community by dragging our feet, I'd rather go this route, not intentionally circumventing the Water Commission. I would ask if Mr. McAldonny serves on the Water Commission with me, if he's acceptable to that as well.
I, I'm very supportive of this. Obviously, it would be nice to, to take it to the Commission first. This is a, an issue that has been a long time in, in need of being addressed. I can remember having multiple conversations with Shay and other, other developers with, with concerns about this in terms of costs of their project, et cetera. So I, I do support this. I, I would wonder if, I don't know if the mayor or staff would be able to attend the district meeting to help introduce this so that there is some staff on hand to relay that.
And I'll ask staff to put it on my calendar, and I'll plan to attend as well.
That would be great. And then obviously, we can follow up with that discussion at our next Water Commission meeting, which I think is just in a couple weeks, right?
Yeah. So if you'll have, Lisa, put that on my calendar, I'll plan to attend that meeting.
Do you need a motion, Mr. Mayor?
I do need a motion, please.
I think I talked over you.
Yes.
I would, uh...
Oh, you have a comment or question?
Yeah.
Okay, Steve?
Now, I know these are proposed projects that are multi-tenant, attendant, industrial. This is for commercial as well, correct?
Inline commercial, yes, correct. Anything else, Steve?
That's it, thank you.
All right, Mr. McAldonny?
I would move that council support the letter to the district regarding multi-tap, removal of the multi-tap requirement for inline, commercial, and industrial.
Thank you. Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion of second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. All right, well, is there any other administrative council business other than, I know Mr. Douglas wants to talk about avid golfer. Mr. Douglas?
Say it again?
Avid golfer.
Oh, that was in the report.
Oh, that's not council business?
No.
All right, well...
Oh, but I do have council business, I'm sorry, thanks for that.
I'm sorry, you just burned your one shot.
No, I was, I was just circling the commercial industrial in here just to...
All right, go ahead, Mr. Douglas.
I was going to ask about the trail behind Buckley Ranch going into Stewart Middle School. I, you know, I brought this up back in fifteen, where, and then some things were discussed in sixteen, now we're in seventeen. And just kind of update of where they're at, because I know Mike Brown showed me a proposed bridge design they were working on, and it was back in August of last year. And just like to see where that project's at right now. And then the trail on, on Chambers, I, I believe they're, they're down with that. I see the city's been making great strides, putting some shoulders inside, protecting that soft area with some hard asphalt surface. Down by where the bridge is, I see there's a section of concrete, and I know, Mr. McBroom, city manager McBroom, you had indicated that they were going to come back where the soft crushed areas and put in concrete. And if you could follow to make sure that that's going to be done, or if, if this is what the project is in its final stage. Thanks.
But I just want to bring up one thing on certain things like this, not specifically to you, but for the entire council. If you have sidewalk issues, trail issues, things like that, that you can come in and talk to Mr. McBroom, and he can include it in the report, that'll make our meetings flow easier. We just, it was not too long ago, we had a meeting where we were talking about trying to restrict the time. We're doing good tonight, and I appreciate all the things you can bring forward, Steve, and we want to hear about those. But sometimes it's easier on those, on those items. If you can take those to the city manager and get them in the city manager's report, it'll help ease some of the time for us. And so, you think about that in the future, and that goes to all, all the city council members. All right, is there any other administrative council business coming for the city council? Yes. Mr. Amador?
I just would ask that maybe through the police department, along the Old Quebec, on the east side of Hanson Elementary, every day I watch the students get out of school at two forty-five-ish, and they come walking by, and there appear to always be drag racing at least two to three times a week down the Old Quebec. And I observed three cars drag racing down a two-lane street, where two cars are drag racing, one in the opposite direction, and the third car with his camera phone, recording the whole deal, all the way down. So it, it seems to be somewhat of a, a game to the kids. And so maybe if around the three, three o'clock timeframe, that we could get maybe just a police officer to kind of just stroll through the area, or maybe just kind of hang out down in the crooks of that? Thank you.
All right. Any other council administrative business? Saying none, we'll get into reports. Mr. McBroom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did distribute via email this week's edition of the city manager update. We have an update on Councilwoman Elliott's concern about potential gambling devices in a business in the city, so we are still investigating that. In fact, it's been turned over to the state of Colorado. An update on Councilwoman Elliott's concerns about panhandlers and folks crossing the median near Sixtieth and Eighty-Five. We do have an update on the Buffalo Run Golf Course's recognition in Colorado avid golfer magazines. That's the reason why we distributed a copy of the magazine to each of you. We got some special recognition for the golf course, which is very much a source of pride for us. And last, but certainly not least, Councilman Diaz and Councilman Douglas have been appointed to NLC National Committee, so we have some information there about their recent appointments. That's, certainly brings very positive recognition on the city of Commerce City as well, so congratulations to you both. And then we have our usual monthly capital project update, the legislative report, and the city council work schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Seasley?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. The quarterly report from the city attorney's office for the first quarter of twenty seventeen will be issued later this week. This is our first three months of being fully staffed there. By now, everybody's met the deputy city attorney, Matt Hader, who is here tonight helping me reading things, and he will be filling in for me in my absence in the next month or so. So, thank you.
All right, congratulations and welcome to Matt. I see he's already left. He should have let you, as a new attorney under you, he should have allowed you to leave since you're not feeling well, and he should have said, "Boss, I'll take over, take care of it," but...
I meant extremely gracious boss.
Yeah, well, let's see how long that continues.
He calls me to kill.
All right. I'll get into my report. First and foremost, I want to thank Mr. Bullock. I was sick for about a week. Mr. Bullock took on several things, and matter of fact, one of those things, which doesn't happen very often, he had the opportunity to run a meeting, happened to be the opportunity to run a meeting that had a contentious public hearing. And I, I appreciate that, Mr. Bullock. And then, again, tonight, too, because they continued that hearing, to go ahead and, and finish that hearing out, I think not only was it appropriate, but it, it's good. Good training, and hope you learned a little bit from it. So I appreciate that. And then he was also covering for me this last week. I was out of town from, he, he covered from Thursday through Sunday, and I got back home late last night, and I appreciate that coverage gave me a little time to spend some time with my family. But for reports, I have a few because I was sick and out of town. Rotary, two different times, and, and a NADA meeting. And I think most importantly was the meeting that I had today. I met with Mr. Gisette's of CDOT, and I can't think of the other gentleman's name, but they came down to City Hall and allowed me to have a dialogue with them. Brian was there, and Michelle Hollstead was with me. And I talked to them in depth about concerns that this city has been having with CDOT for many years. Primarily, the lack of information, the lack of respect for communication concerning both times they asked us to sign on to a flyover grant application for Hundred and Fourth Avenue, Highway Eighty-Five. And I explained why we didn't sign on to that, that, number one, our residents need to have the opportunity to, to know about it, have knowledge about it, and engage in the process. They, we can't get five days' notice that you need to sign this, we're going to send it in whether you want, whether you sign it or not. That just doesn't work for me. And I'm going more into depth in this report just because I think it's been an evolving issue with the state, and I want to make sure that the council knows that I got across all of our points of contention. I talked about the Highway Eighty-Five coalition that, that is going on in Weld County, the fact that it's not an expressway for Commerce City, the fact that if it wants to be an expressway, it should be cut off at the county line, Highway Seven, and go north from there. But we need CDOT to act, not as several different areas, regions. They're all one CDOT, and they need to work together, and they need to protect the interest of all the parties involved. The importance of Hundred and Twentieth flyover, when we have discussions about the Hundred and Fourth flyover, and how that needs to be done as well. Some of the response on that was that they're looking at doing more divulsions, that they feel that that's a good way to help, help to, to come up with funding for projects like the Hundred and Twentieth flyover, is to do more divulsions. Some of the pieces that they're talking about are like pieces that they still have on Hundred and Fourth as state highway, pieces like Two Twenty-four, or we know it as Seventy-Fourth Avenue. I, I told them that I would be interested in seeing some devotion of Two Twenty-four if we could have a discussion, and I wanted it on their radar now, that we need on and off ramps and full accessibility for I-76 at Two Twenty-four so that it will benefit our rail station. And so they, they've got that message loud and clear today. Talked to them a lot about Six and Eighty-Five, Sixtieth Avenue, the Seven Lane, the Seven, the Octopus, or whatever it's called. They agreed it was one of the worst intersections in the state. I talked to them about all the years that I lived here and haven't seen any major improvements. They did assure us that there's seven million that will be going into Sixtieth and Eighty-Five and Two Seventy next year. So, seven million. I did tell them I'd, I'd really appreciate it if they'd find a way to get our residents back seven million dollars for the Hundred and Fourth infrastructure that we put in if they move forward to do an overpass at that location because of lack of planning on their part. I have to tell you that they did apologize, they did admit that they were in the wrong, they did say that it wouldn't happen anymore, and they did say that they would be in and start having study sessions with this council to talk about needs within this community. I made it very clear that the one ballot measure that, that is moving forward is point six percent in sales tax to help fund transportation for the state of Colorado, and how a community of fifty-three thousand like Commerce City is one of the top generators in sales tax because of the industrial base that we have, and how we would be giving more and receiving less. And that, I, I went on to tell them that not only are, are we concerned about the big-ticket items and the communication, however, when one of our residents drives through Lewisville on One-Nineteen and sees the sound walls and the landscaping and the pristine right-of-ways along the state highway, that we struggle with a four-by-four piece of lumber laying in a median at Seventy-Fourth and Highway Eighty-Five for two or three years before it's picked up. Lack of sweeping, lack of maintenance, lack of mowing. They did say that they were going to have their maintenance person for the, for, for the highways in our area sit down with Steve Ortega and, and drive these right-of-ways to talk about what needs to be done from a maintenance perspective so that we can get some sweeping and just general maintenance, upgrades on signs, ditches cleaned out, the mowing taken care of. I said it goes from the bottom of the barrel all the way up to the high-ticket items, and the lack thereof, nothing has been done. the lack thereof, nothing has been done in between. They assured us that they were going to be working with us on all aspects. They assured me that this council would be seeing them in the very near-term future in a study session to talk about I-70, what happens with traffic, communication, and accessibility to deal with interior roads to Commerce City that are having additional impacts from I-70, improvements that can happen on 270. They did say that there are no major improvements that can happen to 270 before the I-70 Central Project, and that they would not have any improvements, they would not be doing lane improvements to both at the same time because of the priority to I-70. But the discussions will be taken care of. I leave it on this council's head and on my own, that if we don't start seeing that communication, that we get them back in here and we have a much more serious discussion. But I went, I laid it on the line from everything, from signs and maintenance to 120th Avenue, and they did tell me that they're very interested in doing more devotion because of funding to try to create more of their resources to highways instead of roads like 224 that are more local collectors rather than highways. And so, we need to be thinking outside the box when it comes to what some of those highways that we have, and doing divulsions, whether it's Brighton Boulevard, where it's still a state highway and it's not a highway, therefore not, doesn't get the maintenance it deserves. Is that something that the city should look at taking over maintenance of to get improvements elsewhere and do trade-offs with the state? 224, like I said, and I-76. So keep that in mind when we start thinking outside the box, and what we need from the state, and what we're willing to take on and make those improvements ourself. Kind of like what we did with Highway 2. Yeah, we did the devotion, but on the backside, I still think we need to hold that against them, that we didn't get any outside project efforts as well. So when we do talk about 120th and 85, we need to remind them that we took one of their burdens and we fixed it, and alleviated them of those maintenance issues, and we need that additional help to be pushed off on projects like 120th and 85. So it was about an hour and a half-long conversation. I think I did most of the conversing, but I can tell you, and I will reassure you, I did get my point across, and they know we won't be tolerant, we will not be tolerant of them coming in with short notice to sign major agreements that have severe impacts or potential impacts to our residents. So I wanted to make sure you were all aware that that meeting did get to happen, and the follow-up did occur, and we'll keep you posted. Yes, Mr. McAdonny?
Thanks for that update and for the advocacy for the community. Did the state freight plan come up at all during that conversation?
It did not. It did not. We talked about the fact that we got six of the nine major interstates in the state coming through. Of course, a lot of it was, "Well, you know, we have only so much money, we've got to take care of North I-25 from the Highway 7, I-25," potential. And one of the things that they said kind of shocked me, they said, "That's a $70 million project, but it includes the flyover and everything else and a, what do they call that, new style intersection?"
Diverging diamond.
Diverging diamond. But in the center of I-25 and Highway 7 will be a parking ride. And it'll come, there's an elevator that brings you up from the interstate to the Highway 7, and it looks extremely costly, but if they're talking about $70 million on an I-25 project with a diverging diamond and parking ride and elevators and everything else, I can't believe that 104th and 120th can be as expensive as what I once thought. I thought they were in the $50 million range. I don't think they're quite probably that high. I would imagine they're probably more in the $30 to $40 million. Brian?
104th and 85 is probably $60.
What's 120? Just a rough, give me an idea.
Actually, we're thinking like $50 to $70 million for each.
For each?
Yeah.
How do they get away with $70 million for I-25 and Highway 7 with a parking ride and an elevator in the middle?
That's a diverging diamond.
Because that's a diverging diamond. I mean, and it's crossing mu, it's twice the span. So it's interesting how they come up with their numbers, because I'm thinking, wow, that would take care of all of our problem, so.
Their grant application, 104th and 85, is for $60 to $70 million.
Well, it's interesting that they said $70 million on a Highway 7, I-25. But they also said a big portion of their money has to go south I-25 this year, Monument Hill, Colorado Springs, they want to add that additional line.
West.
Yep, I-70 West is another one, Monument up through Dillon area. Yeah, they, so I realize they cover the whole state, but I also said, "That's great, I'm glad you're taking care of everybody, but I'm worried about you taking care of Commerce City." So I made that point, and I got it across, and they will be here, and I'm expecting them here more often than not. And when they're here, I expect this council and this community to make sure, and that goes for you, Mr. Serna, make sure that they're hearing. It's about time we get some attention. So I got that.
Just one quick update. The study session item they committed to is to come back and talk through our Highway 85 PEL comments, because we had a number of them.
Yep. So, and I also, you know, we talked about this whole, like I said, the Highway 85 Coalition, and I told them that I would do whatever's necessary to help get out, get that shoved to the north and keep it from having an impact on us because of where I-76 is at, dumping the traffic in. So I think that it was a good segue into more conversations, and it was something that I think we really needed to have happen, and it's been a long time coming. So I'm hopeful of some positive results from it, but you all need to keep an eye on it and make sure that they put that $7 million into 270 and Vasquez in the next 12, 14 months. All right, that's my report. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add? Mr. McAdonny?
I just want to bring attention to the Youth Commission. I was fortunate enough, my daughter and I actually joined the Youth Commission on the 29th. They spent the day at the Capitol, and we were quite fortunate as we entered the gallery of the Senate chambers, we were able to catch our own Senator Moreno recognizing Commerce City's former Senator Bob Martinez, and Mr. Serna was part of the contingent on hand to honor Mr. Martinez. Our youth commissioners didn't know who he was, and so when we were finished with the presentation, I took them out in the hall and pulled up his information on Wikipedia to give them a full context of his background. And so, it might be something, Mr. Serna, if you have an opportunity to help provide some firsthand perspective on Mr. Martinez's contributions to the community, I think they would really welcome that. You saw some eyes kind of go wide as I gave them that background, and I think it would be neat to have somebody like you help convey that to them firsthand. What, Mr. Bullock can help connect you, as he's our council liaison to the commission and can give you a sense of when those meetings are. But we were quite fortunate, obviously, to be on hand to see that happen. They sat through a very lengthy commission, Education Commission hearing, thought that was quite boring, but we, again, I think everybody would be quite proud of how our commissioners handled themselves while at the Capitol. Representative Janey, Michelson Janey, called attention during the House session that we were present, and we really paused activity and everybody turned around and clapped and acknowledged the youth commissioners' presence. So I think it was a great day, and thanks to staff, obviously, for their coordination of that activity and for letting us tag along. It was a good day.
All right. You know, there's one thing that I need to do is welcome and congratulate Clint Nichols on being our interim Chief of Police. So congratulations, Clint. And I'm already trying to throw him in the fire by getting calls through the City Manager and late on Sunday nights to talk about shots fired, but you're going to get your fill, and we appreciate you taking on the role. I think you'll do well. I've still got some names lit up here. Mr. Amador, you have something to add?
Oh, no, it's from before.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Getting back to the subject of CDOT, at this time, I would like to applaud you and staff for the time you took to have this meeting with them and to explain our feelings in this area. Like I said, it's long overdue, and there again, I'd like to applaud you and staff.
Thank you. And yeah, I know a lot of thanks go out to staff for getting the meeting arranged, but if we don't stay on top of it, we will not get any attention. Mr. Douglas, do you have anything else?
Yes, and say, see, last Tuesday was the first quarter of Police Pension, and Police Pension Fund is doing great. Also attended the Precious Child Gala on Saturday, listened to a lot of heartfelt stories of families trying to make it, and the support that goes out from Precious Child, and they happened to raise almost $200,000 that night, so hats off to them. Thanks.
All right. If there be no further business to come before the City Council of Commerce City this evening, we are adjourned. Thank you all for being here.